Here.
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 Please rise to the podium.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the life of the United States of America, to the people alive for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items? Do we have public comments this evening?
Sure.
Do you want to go to the podium if that's okay?
Sure.
Well, there's a microphone. Whatever you prefer is fine with us.
Is it on? Do I have to do it?
No, you're outside.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Stuart Goodman, and my two children, who are now 37 and 33, went through school District 76. Things have definitely changed. I have resided in the area for 33 years. The safety of children is my number-one reason for being here tonight. I'm here representing my local Moms Demand Action group to ask you to vote no on Resolution Number One at the Illinois Association of School Boards meeting in November. Resolution One calls for giving school districts across the state the discretion to armed teachers, but armed teachers would make children and everyone in a school less safe. The Giffords Law Center has gathered 80 reported cases in the last five years of guns being mishandled by adults at schools. They get left in bathrooms, they fall out of pockets, kids find them in unsupervised classrooms and on the playground. And those are just the reported instances. There is no evidence that an armed teacher would be able to protect children. In fact, a study published in the Journal of Adolescence Health earlier this year found no evidence that the presence of highly-trained resource officers in schools lessened the severity of school shooting incidents. So why would armed teachers be any more effective? Evidence is building on what keeps kids safe in school, and it's not guns. I stand with the vast majority of students, parents, and teachers who know that schools are safer when guns aren't in them. Please vote no on Resolution Number One. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments this evening? Okay, moving on to presentations. Thank you. We have an exciting opportunity. We have a lot of students and families in the audience because last spring, the Illinois Principals Association holds its annual conference in October, and they always reach out to school districts to see if there are any students, staff, or administrators that want to put together a presentation and showcase what they're doing in their schools or in their district. So I had shared that information with Mr. Hanson, who in turn shared it with Mr. Shorche, and they have put together an application highlighting what they do in our Student Broadcast Club at West Oak, and they were selected and went down to Burlington last week and actually presented at the Illinois Principals Association Conference. And we'd like to take an opportunity to recognize them tonight because they are our superstars that represented not only West Oak, but also District 76 and Mundeline and Diamond Lake community. And so we're very proud of you, and thank you, parents, for your support for being here tonight. And Mr. Wooliford, would you like to take a few minutes to recognize what the project was and then introduce our staff that are here this evening?
Absolutely. I'll just turn around, and I'll walk up here. Probably don't need a microphone, but I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Byrne and Mr. Shorche, two staff members who really accepted this challenge and rose to it and really did an outstanding job putting it together. The Broadcast Club gives children a voice and an opportunity to use technology in a variety of different ways. It's a lot of fun. And I think while being recognized at IPA is great and thrilling, and Mr. Prebble was there, thank you, Mr. Prebble, and we even got some free furniture out of it. I mean, it was a win-win-win, you know? But I think my favorite goes back to we needed some help with this big, grandiose move in the district. And we're trying to figure out because, no offense, but teachers were very nervous about the move, especially all their things in their room and putting them in boxes, and where are the boxes going to go? And how do I make a box? And so the Broadcast Club came to the rescue and put together a video and directions for our teachers, and lo and behold, nothing got lost, and it worked, and it was a wonderful way for our children to teach the adults. And I think it's a great opportunity that students get to do these types of interactions. And our Broadcast Club, this is just the tip of an iceberg because I think as we continue to look at all the wonderful new technology that we've brought into our school and with the drive and support from Mr. Hanson and the board and the district, but also just from the youth, we're going to continue to see these great things. And to Mr. Shorche and Ms. Byrne, it takes a lot to give up your time to do that, but it really pays great dividends. So thank you as well for putting forth that effort with our children. Moms and dads, I think it's great that you're able to support your children and encourage them to get involved in things outside the classroom. We know that children, when they get involved, have a greater experience in school, and so the more they can do, and it's not always about the things we think about. It's not always basketball, or wrestling, or track, or it's not about theater or concerts. But sometimes it's having an opportunity for kids to tinker and mess around and do things, you know? And that's why things like Broadcast Club and Legos and Makerspaces, and these things are important for kids. So the more we can continue to do so, the better, I think, our students and our community will benefit from it. So I had asked a lot of the students if they were coming tonight, and I see a good portion of them. So I made a list, and hopefully I've got it right, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize beforehand, and again, help me learn it. But we're going to ask you to come up, and I know Mr. Cunningham, would you join me, please? Dr. Sharmel Lewis, would you please join me? And so Mr. Shorche and Ms. Byrne, would you please join me? Because I think it's important that we're up here together, supporting our children. I'll read their names, and then certificates should be passed out.
These are the students who sat there with someone. Come on in, come on in.
That sounds great. Sounds good.
You're receiving.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. So hopefully, we have the following students here. I'll read their names if they're not here as well. Rerebi Artiaga, if you're here, please come on up. Salzo Cabrera, please come right up. Jacob Aikenbaum could not be here, I knew that. I would like to recognize Jacob. Jasmine Ramirez, please come forward. Please stay up here, two boys and girls. We're going to stay up here. Julia Ruiz could not make it. Luis Sams. Jalen Smith.
Woo!
Camila Sullivan.
Jesus Heaz.
Paula Vargas.
I know this young lady is ill, she's not here today. Jessica Alcuna. Ashley Lucas could not make it. And Catalina Vargas, please come forward. Before we take a final picture with everybody and all that, I also would like to take a moment. We lost a student last Friday, Charlotte Graham. Charlotte was a key member of the Broadcast Club, and we miss her dearly, but she needs to be recognized. So, thank you. And so if we give a round of applause to our Broadcast. We're going to do picture time. Parents, if you'd like to come up over here, you may also. Boys and girls, how should we do it? Right out there. Oh, we're going to go out front of the mural, I guess, right? Okay.
Our second presentation tonight, Dr. Kevin Myers, superintendent of District 120 and District 75, Mundeline Elementary School and Mundeline High School. And I know last board meeting, we talked, and I brought some information forward too about sanctuary school and the school's safety. And Mr. Lozado had asked if it's been done anywhere else, and I had shared that, or I had shared that Dr. Myers had shared this with me, and they were doing it in 120 and proposing it in District 75. So he had asked if it would be okay if Dr. Myers came and maybe shared a little bit of how it was working and how it was rolled out in District 120. So thank you very much, Dr. Myers, for coming in today.
Glad to. You know, Mike, can I come up and sit by you? Because I feel like I'm far away.
You missed it, missed it. You want to say it?
I want to see you guys. If I'm coming, I want to be by you.
So an understanding, the context of what we're looking to deal with tonight, it was a good time to move and reflect about 120 best. And I would say what started for us back in 2016-17 was identification of lack of participation for us regards to our families being involved, whether it was athletics, clubs, activities, attending parent events, or what we're finding is we needed to reach out more to our families, what was going on. What was taking place at the same time is we started to get more questions coming up about immigration. And through that process, we decided we needed to have more of an outreach to be able to go into our families' homes, where we actually had families invite us into their homes and ask the neighbors to actually meet with us at times that were convenient for them to give us feedback on what's been working and what we can do to be more inviting as a school district for our families. So we actually did grassroots work, trying to find out what was going on and how we could reach out to more of our families. Because what we definitely knew was we needed to have a stronger parent involvement or like one through the high school year. Because what we did identify is, all of a sudden, it seems like once a child hits ninth grade, a lot of the parent organizations, kids are off, and then our high school are good to go. So what we ended up finding out was parents wanted to be able to know that their children were definitely going to be safe under any circumstance. The voice of the board mattered very much in that process, and that being able to verbally say that in a public forum would make a difference because what we saw were some end results that I think were very positive, that we can relate to. From an administrative side, as we started to investigate this, when we're just starting to talk about the process, because the Safe School Resolution, right, try and draw the connection to it, we started asking, what do we do if ICE would come to our building? Or how do we respond if we have officers of any type coming to our building? It wasn't just from an administrative standpoint, as our security staff, as our teachers, our instructional assistants, what do we do? It was clear that we didn't have a very good process in place. Most of us are like the rule followers. Officer says, "Need to see somebody?" "Yes, sir." So we were able to identify some of those points that we needed to get better at, and it allowed us to do that. What it did from a board standpoint was we were able to bring this forward to our board and say, "Here's what we needed and why," and we were able to show that to them. And the board started asking more questions. And what ended up happening is the what became, we started communicating more with student groups, get more information from them on what it meant to be a safe school because ultimately, a safe school resolution is reaffirming all of the things that we can do at the school district within those legal confines. So we're not saying we're going to do anything illegal. What we're saying is we are making sure that our families know that it's a safe and supportive environment, which in the end should create a better learning environment for all of our students, because there's nothing more disheartening than when you know you have families that have concerns. And what you do, what we've done, is be able to demonstrate that by how do we make the school more inviting? So it was putting our signage that items were in dual language. It was creating more opportunities where we actually were making purposeful invites to attend events. The example I give you is, one of the things that we noticed was our parent conferences. We averaged probably about 25, 30 percent of our families would attend. This past conference, we had over 600 families attend. And part of that is because there's been initiatives based off of feedback with families, personal calls. "Where are you? We'd really like to see you, be involved." And part of that, while the connection's not directly there, when the school board went through and decided to approve the Safe School Resolution, hearing that was impactful. But the actions the board took after that meant even more, because what it did was it freed up the administration and gave clearer direction and support for our teachers to say, "We want to see these things changed because we've heard from our students, this is where they feel uncomfortable," for whatever the reason may be, "and we can address it." The board followed through and even went as far as after looking more studies, hired a parent liaison. Sole purpose to be able to make sure we're making those strong connections with our families. As a staff, what we've also continued to do is make this part of our procedural process that we do every year, remind your staff of how we respond to any situations. So not only does our staff know that, but anytime we're in public forums, we're able to communicate that from an administrative standpoint. Here's where our board is set, here's what they believe, here's the resolution, we've got it posted on our website. You know we're a place where you can be able to come in and attend and feel safe and secure, no matter who you are. That's one of our goals. The direct result of that is we now have a much more diverse parent program in place for our PTO. We didn't have a parent program before. We now have roughly 20 parents consistently that are attending and meeting on a monthly basis. Our Booster Club was gone. We now have the Booster Club back in place. Our board, when it became board elections, which I was very proud of the board, they actually had the conversation of what do we need to do to help encourage more diversity with our own board? They had that conversation, and that was something that directly came about because they talked about going through the Safe School Resolution, because it made them, as a board, think about things differently. So what's also transpired because of that is the board has been very proactive in saying, "What are our board policies that are directly linked to the Safe School Resolution?" So they pulled all those out, and then one of the things that they've done is they've reviewed those and say, "How do these things support or present roadblocks potentially for our students? As a board, how can we work with that policy to make sure we're giving every student that opportunity they need to be successful?" So by us starting that process with initiating the Safe School Resolution, hearing the board speak in one voice gave permission to the admin bill to do that. What I'd say is the action taken by the board to support that continually going on from here has made all the difference in the world as far as the climate within the building because that is a tone setter for the school district. And while I can't say, give you a correct connection to this, I don't think for one second that this is a coincidence, what I'll share right here. This year, Mundeline High School was awarded, primarily as one of the best high schools in the country out of 15,000, ranked in top 12 percent. And it's going to come out next week, it's rated as one of the top STEM schools in the nation. That's three years after enacting the state's school program. And what we're definitely seeing is a more diverse student population getting involved. We've had 5 percent increase in diversity of participants in our athletics and clubs activities for the last two years. So I said 12 percent. Five. So we've had a 10 percent increase total in the last two years on our clubs and activities since this has been enacted. One of the key parts of that, and I'm going to thank you, hiring Dr. Carol Lewis was one of the great things that you've done. I've been here six years, and the partnership that has became since she started, it has meant all the difference in the world because the connection of our kids from coming here to the high school and our community is felt when we're working together. A simple example for you is the Wellness Center. 75, 76, and 120 have all come together and worked in the Wellness Center. It was, two weeks ago roughly, a family in need came forward. Daisy was there, Jimmy DiCarlo, Jorge from 75. After hours, families homeless, didn't have anything, and they were taking out of their own pockets and helping however they could to make the best they could for this family. I can tell you with confidence, six years ago, that wasn't happening. And the drive Dr. Lewis has was getting us connected with curriculum, working together, working towards equity. She helped bring us together with 20, 75, and 76 for professional development on equity because two years ago speaks volumes, and our community sees that. So to me, enacting a Safe School Resolution is one piece of that, and the more that we can show unity amongst our school districts, because we are ultimately one educational institution, the more empowered you're going to have our community's feeling, and I think what you're going to see is a better product, you know, represented to our students and our families, who definitely are going to feel more valued by that effort that you're putting forward to make that happen. So with that, do you have any questions? If you want me to go back, I am more than willing to do that at any point in time.
So you talked about, you put a number to the increase in student participation in clubs and athletics, and you started early on in your presentation saying that you were looking to increase parent involvement. Do you have any metrics for how much that increased?
I'll give you some examples, so we've got the numbers. So what, the parent involvement, we went from not having a parent mentor or parent organization to now we have a functioning parent organization that meets monthly that runs activities monthly. So that's in place.
Yeah, you mentioned the Booster Club came back.
Yes, the Booster Club came back. The parent involvement, so three years ago, the parent group enacted an activity in the fall for all incoming freshmen, and the families are invited to a freshman get-to-date event because of the four different school districts that come in. It has increased from year one from roughly 100 families to now we're almost at 8 percent of our families are incoming freshmen or students will end up showing up to the event. What we've been able to do, the best begins with a lot of signup sheets for people attending. Right, right, it's funny, but one of the best indicators we have is the amount of food we give out. So we're averaging over 500 hot dogs the last two years that we give out each time, so that's definitely an indicator. Each year, we have multiple freshman nights. We just had one of the incoming freshman nights last Monday, and historically, we've been right around 100 to 150 families out of all four schools that feed into the high school attend. Last Monday, we had 300. So you can see, it's bang for my money. When we ask for volunteers, we probably now average anywhere 5 to 10 parent volunteers, whether it's coming to speak on a panel, as far as like a professional panel, we're talking to students, or meeting with college students, potential college students, or working with an educator program, which it now stands at over 50 volunteers that are working with an educator program at the Sharpe Bank piece, are all paying an increase during that time as far as the parent involvement. We've definitely been monitoring. And I'd say probably one of the most substantial ones for us is the parent capital section. For us, we see an increase, over 200 parents just over 20 years, that's impressive. Pretty proud.
I want to address a couple first. Thank you. Great presentation. So, but I have lots of questions, so I'll just give it to you. Talk a little bit about the initial community, how that went and how you progressed there.
So what we ended up doing was soliciting some of our parents that also were already connected with the school a little bit, and asked them what was the best way to be able to reach out to our families. Knowing our expanding community is a big part for us that we really wanted to hit, I reached out to Luis Fuentes and asked him, "How can we talk to some of our parent groups?" We went to a lot of the religious institutions, asked them if we could meet with them. They reached their congregations, set up types to be able to meet with them. So that's how we went about organizing who we would be able to meet with, where we could get a captive audience, whether they would be in mass. After that, we ended up having what I'd say are key parents that want to be more involved in this process, and they're the ones that came up with the idea of neighborhood, let's say, lunch learns, like if I'm trying to play it, and they suggested that they'll grab their neighbors and it's just, "We're going to come and talk and meet and ask some set questions." The other aspect that we looked at was the community familiarity, and it's the Coco de Batucas, it's usually in the fall, but we'll go up to the bus stops, and it's just right there, starting to meet with the families, get them to be a little more comfortable with who we are, introducing ourselves, and offering, you know what, "We'd really love to see you to come over and see this part of the building. We've been up to the school lately, we'd love to meet with you." That's where we really started to get more connection with our community. Okay, it's your question?
Yes. Okay. You used the term "safe school," and obviously, in our packets, we see sanctuaries. Was there a difference in using one term or another?
I think the "safe school" terminology definitely goes more to the federal level with when you hear that, when they talk about the cities, saying they're going to be sanctuary cities. I use them interchangeably. So I wouldn't be able to discern that for either of you. I always call it "safe school" because, A, I think from a public perception piece, people can understand that a little bit more, and I think it falls in line with an educational standpoint that we're here to provide the state with supportive environment for all of our students, which is one of our top priorities, so, yeah.
And lastly, we're now, I'll have to give you notes and additional questions. Talk a little bit about any issues that this effort directly addressed. If you had anything, anything that created concerns in the community that you felt the community was more at ease. I think the governing issue of ICE, and the, well, I think we've got the intrusion, but the law of that, what did you tell us about how the community reacted in saying, "Yes, thank you for this, this is one of the best worries for me," certainly in the presentation?
So certainly the first thing that it did address with the ICE piece, with immigration potentially coming in. What we did notice was the parents that wouldn't communicate, or more, it was more times than not usually our students would come and communicate a concern, the frequency in which the students would be able to come forward, talk to a counselor, and ask for help increased because we can't go and solicit that, right, just by a look or a name or anything. So we do rely on our students, our parents, to bring that forward to us. So we did see an increase in that, that willingness to bring that forward for us, which made us much more proactive in how we could help support our families because it was on a greater scale. More times than not, we're typically not going to hear anything about it. I would say for you, one of the unintended benefits of where our community has said "thanks" is that by passing the resolution, it was the starting point for 120, started the path of professional development all around the topic of equity, and you start talking about race, and what does that mean for us as a society? What does that mean for us individually and institutional? And how is that impacting that? So because we've been in that conversation for three years now, we, as an organization, are much more adept to be able to talk about race with one another because it is a very challenging conversation, no matter what, and our community has definitely come back and said, "Thank you for engaging in that conversation," because some of the direct results of that are, we've seen how we've seen some coursework because tracking with honors programming, we've got earned honors now because what was happening, we're freshmen, we're basically getting funneled. If you have these prerequisites, you automatically got to go to AP, you automatically have advantage over every other student in the building. Well, there's still a lot of really talented kids that we all have that access. So one of the positive results were, we ended up seeing we had implemented earned honors, we're in the second year, we had 60 percent of the kids in the earned honors class actually earned the extra honors piece that wouldn't have earned that before. And we're actually seeing all of our other metrics that people might argue are going to go down. And our community has definitely come back and said, thank you for engaging in that conversation, because some of the direct results of that are, we've seen, how we've seen some coursework because tracking with honors programming. We've got earned honors now, because what was happening, we're freshmen, we're basically getting funneled. If you have these prerequisites, you automatically got to go to AP, you automatically have advantage over every other student in the building. Well, there's still a lot of really talented kids that we all have that access. So, one of the positive results were, we ended up seeing we had implemented earned honors, we're in the second year, we had 60% of the kids in the earned honors class actually earned the extra honors piece that wouldn't have earned that before. And we're actually seeing all of our other metrics that people might argue are going to go down, our AP scores, our AP enrollment, everything, actually increased. So, that was one of the unintended benefits I don't think we were looking to have as a result, but it certainly provided us the opportunity to do that. And that, I would tell you, is where our community's probably been, and most of all were saying, thank you. We need to be mindful of how everybody's doing, because this is for all schools. So, I think what we've learned through the process, we need to communicate a lot more about everything we're doing from an academic and behavioral aspect, so that if you have parents that would come forward and say, this was a benefit for my student, what I suggest is, you need to have the metrics of what you think would determine that or not, whether it's discipline-wise, how we just want students to identify more or whatnot, or looking at how students do understand our test, because it is a big drive. So, what I'd be able to share with you, we've been able to show for the last three years, our top 15% of the students that attend 111, that take the SAT, score in the top 10% of the country, and their scores have increased by over 100 points in three years. So, when you ask about some of the things that happened because of the resolution, that was really a launch point for 120 doing this. You can email me your other questions, to be happy to board with the board, chairman to remember, happy to have any of you, please. Worth discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all the details and the information. Have a good night.
Thank you.
That was Dr. Lewis's presentation. Moving on to our business agenda for the evening. We have one item for action and then one item that will be for action at our next meeting. So, the omnibus vote agenda will be submitted for approval at the next meeting. And then tonight, we will be looking at the 2019 tentative tax levy and set the levy curating date. Eric, did you want to do a presentation on that?
Levy?
Yeah.
Today, I'm just going to really just point out a couple of key things that I would look for, and I would encourage everybody to come meet with me and discuss if you'd like to walk through the levy in more detail prior to the meeting.
Okay.
But at the hearing, on the 17th, I'll walk through the presentation, walk through the documents, it's all in public as well.
Okay.
And that's at the December 17th meeting.
November 17th?
The 17th.
Yes.
It's probably the 17th. Right. The next meeting that we have is November 19th, but the actual levy presentation in here will be at the December 17th meeting.
So, yeah, the, we were asking to approve the tentative levy tonight. It just meets our posting requirements. It needs to be at least 20 days prior to the levy hearing taking place. And then we also have some strict guidelines as far as when it needs to be posted in the paper. So, the presentation, I put December 6th. It's no more than 14, or no less than seven days prior to the levy hearing taking place. CPI was 1.9% this year, so we've had some pretty stable CPIs the last few years. It was 2.1, 2.1, and now it's 1.9. And that's after the years of being less than 1%. So, the amount of money that we get, we're tied to the tax cap formula, so it's 5% for CPI, whichever is lower, plus any new property. Between El and Mundialine, the new properties will be far between. We estimate about $2 million in new property throughout the district. So, all it equates to was essentially a $330,000 increase to the amount of money we received last year. So, they take last year's calculation times the CPI formula, that's the new money we get. So, the presentation, I think, walks through some of the main details as far as calculations, outgoes, and I really try to update the frequently asked questions at the end of the presentations. I feel like that relates best to taxpayers' questions, what they might have as far as, why are my taxes going up or down, and how that works in relation to others in the district. There is a slide, I'll just recommend, recommend reviewing that as well. It's the, sorry, the taxpayer itself is called the levy worksheet document, and that goes through some historical tax extensions of the issue. And I have two columns, there's one that's in blue and one that's in yellow. So, the yellow column that I have there, that's what I would focus on as far as why we need our best guess as to the money we're going to generate this year. But as a reminder, we'll be able to do a balloon levy, which is asking for more money than we reasonably expect to receive. So, when I post the document in the paper, it says, the district's asking for 25% more than previous year. Well, that's just because we use this balloon levy method to capture all the new money in the district that's possible, but we're still tied to the amount of money that they'll give us. We only get the actual amount of money tied to the CPI formula, not the balloon levy. So, please let me know if you guys have any questions. I encourage you, as I said, to meet with me at any point, walk through all these documents, especially if you're unfamiliar with them, but they're relatively the same documents we had last year, I just updated them.
Great. So, moving on to the resolution. The following resolution is being included for approval on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Whereas the taxing district was determined not less than 20 days prior to the official adoption of the aggregate levy of the district, estimated amount of taxes necessary to be levied for the year. And whereas the Truth in Taxation Act requires a public hearing, if the estimate of the aggregate tax levy exceeds 100 to 5% of the amount extended the previous year, therefore being resolved, Diamond Lake School District Board of Education approves the tentative levy as presented and will hold a public levy hearing on December 17th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve?
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Candela?
One.
Okay. That concludes our business agenda for the evening. Moving on to board discussion, we have the five-year facility plan update.
So, we focused on the agenda this time. I know Mrs. Lozada wasn't able to make our five-year facility presentation that we had at the last, prior to the last board meeting. So, I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions or any follow-ups that you have, because what we're hoping to do at the next board meeting, which is on November 19th, is have our bond representative, Elizabeth Tennessee, come from Redding, James, and kind of walk through what the debt certificate process looks like, and timelines of things, and the cost of things, and then, you know, take action on that at the December board meeting. So, I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions about any projects that are being done, any financing that's being done, and handling the timeline or anything else. So, this is more just an opportunity for all of you to discuss anything. Eric, do you want to add anything?
Well, that was perfect. I just had confirmation that Elizabeth isn't able to be at the meeting, and so she still has a pretty brief presentation to walk through, several options, and we can discuss those.
Great. And then, I know Mrs. Tennessee, we asked to have the resolutions committee report at it for some more discussion, because the next, I guess, the committee update is going to be at the July conference on the 20th, or the 21st, the delegation, the delegate or the 22nd?
Yeah. Okay. So, like we discussed at the last meeting, we have, hopefully you guys have had a chance to review all these resolutions. There's 18 of them that we can go through. A lot of them, I think, are pretty non-controversial or routine, but there's a couple that I definitely think we may want to have discussion on. So, I know for resolution one, we've had a couple of public comments, and we've received comments from the community as well on, so I thought we would just start there. And we'll, essentially, if you guys feel like we can come to a conclusion tonight, we can just go through, determine whether or not the board as a whole supports or opposes, and then on the 22nd, I will go vote as the delegate as we've decided as a board. Does that sound okay? Okay. So, resolution one is the student safety resolution. And just a reminder, and I just want to make this clear for anyone in the community that's watching, this is not the school board casting legislation, or if we agree on, or if we vote yes on something, or if we vote no on something, that doesn't mean it's going to be enacted or not enacted. That's just us indicating how we will vote on the 22nd. And that also just means that we're giving direction essentially to the IASB to lobby on our behalf to have laws changed or enacted. So, a vote yes or a vote no doesn't mean that there's going to be law in that area, and it doesn't mean that these things are actually going to happen. So, I just want to clarify that, because I think that sometimes there's confusion in the community as to how this all works. But the first resolution is on student safety, which essentially would allow school districts to have district employees in a voluntary capacity, carry concealed firearms on district property, and there's a number of requirements there. And the IASB is recommending that that be adopted. I don't know if everyone wants, has their own comments, or if you want to just proceed to voting. I'm personally opposed to this resolution. I don't think that there's any data that shows that that would be safer for our students. I think we ask enough of our teachers already, and arming them would not be their best choice. So, that's my own opinion. I don't know if anyone has other comments they want to share.
I agree.
All the communications that we've had, whether through email or through presenting, not one has spoken in favor, so I think we would be misrepresenting our constituents to vote otherwise.
Do you want to say something?
I'm a parent of three students, and I'm vehemently against teachers walking around with a gun. Please no. Insane.
Thank you for sharing that. So, I think we have a consensus that we're voting no on that resolution. Okay. Okay. Moving on to the second resolution on minority-owned businesses. This says that IASB shall support legislation amended in sections of the statute that regulate contract network services to allow school districts to consider any goals set to address social responsibility, including preferences for businesses owned by minorities, women, persons with disabilities, and veterans in selecting companies to service contracts. Does anyone have any comments on that? No? Anyone to vote? You support or oppose?
I would support that.
I would agree, I would support.
I would as well.
Yes.
Me too.
Okay. Let me support that resolution. The school safety grant program, this is different than the first resolution in that it basically would allow the IASB to advocate for the creation and funding of a school safety grant program at the state level that would assist districts in hiring school resource officers or school security personnel for the production of students or staff. And then they would have to meet the definitions required in the school code. That could include off-duty law enforcement officers or law enforcement officers who have retired within the previous five years. They, the school security personnel are allowed to carry a firearm, they continue to receive ongoing training, et cetera. So, that's, that resolution, I believe that the Moms Demand Action Program is in favor of this resolution. Does anyone have any comments?
I initially had some doubts about it, trying to make sure that it wouldn't gravitate towards the first resolution. But as I read through it and as they introduced, for me, it's important to make sure that if there is a school resource officer, that that person is what I call the professional in, whether it's a policeman or someone from law enforcement. So, I'm okay with it, given those correctors, but it's giving the district the option.
I think this is trying to, many schools do have school resource officers, especially at the high school, and I think that this is trying to facilitate making sure that every school would potentially have funding to be able to do so, if funding was what was prohibiting their ability to have that resource officer at the school building, so.
They're already permitted to have those.
Yeah. So, I would support this.
I'd support it.
Margaret?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. School district police force. This basically allows for the school districts that had a police force before to have one It's recommended that it be adopted.
Sorry?
It sounded like it only applies really to like a one specific school district. Is that kind of hybridating that? Oh, it's only downstairs.
I would, I guess, yeah, they're saying that Pure Public Schools is the only school district that had a police force. So, they would be the only ones allowed to do this.
I don't know that I would want my lobbying money going towards pushing that.
The way I read it was that it's historical, these districts that had the police force, because whatever the particular situation is, would be able to re-energize that process again. So, if you had it before, you can have it again, but if you never have it, that would be a plus.
Right. Right. Dave?
Opinion vote, those support?
I hesitate. Yeah, I think it would, so, pointing out that it seems to be sort of only the school districts who submitted the resolution.
Yeah.
And we're talking about IAS, the entirety of the Illinois Association of School Boards, wanting the lobbying to support one district initiative. I would hesitate to approve that.
Okay. Pose, pose, pose. Margaret?
Sure.
Okay. We will pose that. Background checks for substitute teachers. Most of us would be in favor of this.
Agree?
Agree?
Yes. Do we not do this already?
We do, but you're not, it would, it would have, it would lobby for legislation that would have a centralized process, so it would get everyone kind of on board with it together. School safety traffic zones. This would lower the speed limit, change signage, increase police presence, remove designation of your school hours from traffic signs, or implement other warning signs to accommodate your collectivities and facilities being used at schools. Does anyone have a comment, or support or oppose?
I, you know, recently we had the Halloween parade at Diamond Lake, and we had a lot of people parked around the streets and having to cross through there. And, you know, it is kind of a busy street, and it is, I don't know, it felt like it was a little dangerous even then. So, I would definitely be in support of trying to make those areas safer.
I would agree.
I would.
Dave?
Yes.
Agree. Seating of new members for the school board. This allows them not to wait for the certified election result from the county clerk. So, for us, this would be beneficial. We can seat new board members in a faster manner. So, I would be in support of this. No one's opposed. Swearing in school board elections. This allows just various different people to swear in the new school board members, the Board of Education President or Designee, and the Clerk of one's county, or any presiding judge. So, this just allows you to have additional options to swear in new members. I would be in support of that.
But what the IASB is recommending not to adopt, correct?
Oh, why?
It seems like, and why would you not be able to be sworn in with their board? Why would...
Why would you need to have another action?
You have a certain time period for when you have to be sworn in and it could be that the person's not available. That's how I interpret it, though.
Are they saying that you can be sworn in outside of your board meeting? So like in a county clerk's office or like in a judge's office?
Yeah.
And the IASB is not in support of that? And the local Board of Education is still retaining the authority called about various things that are real.
I guess they're just saying it's not necessary to take it outside of the board. I don't think, this doesn't really affect us either way. So if you're a co, if you think we should follow the committee's resolution not to adopt, can you go forward with that? Does anyone have a strong opinion either way?
Just in trying to protect the state boys and the children, probably announcing it to the IASB.
Very interesting. Okay. Terms. IASB shall support legislation that all school districts having a population of not more than 500,000 shall serve four-year terms and be seated at the first board meeting held at least 14 days following the school board election. Districts that are outside of those provisions serve five-year terms and are seated on July 1 following the elections. There's no rationale to have five-year terms for these districts, which we don't have. So they're recommending that this is adopted. I guess it looks like it applies mostly to pure yet again. Does anyone have any feeling either way? No opinion?
Okay, is this?
No.
Yeah, okay, is it?
Okay is adopt or not adopt?
I mean, to adopt, it doesn't really affect us.
No, we won't have it. It's again really focused on one school district.
It's a matter of whether we want to go in or go out simply because of the, yeah, the funding needs to be supported.
Okay. So you want to oppose it?
I'll say yes.
Yes to oppose.
Yes to oppose.
Are you yes to oppose as well?
I agree.
Okay. So we'll oppose unless anyone wants to support. Uh, school board compensation. I know Mrs. Kwan is very in favor of that.
Yeah, just kidding.
This is a big support and encourage us with legislation that will give local school districts the authority to offer compensation to its school board members. I note that IASB recommends we do not adopt this. Who's 21 states that apparently permit compensation? Yeah. I feel like, I feel like we should oppose.
I agree with that.
I have a big kid on.
It's Palatine. Is that District 211?
It must have deep pockets there. Okay. Charter school renewal of charters. IASB shall urge the adoption of legislation that allows participation of host school districts in the charter school renewal process, participation of, yeah, in the charter school renewal process for state authorized charter schools. So that would allow the host school district to participate in the actual renewal. No, once the school is chartered, the local school board can't participate in the renewal. This is recommended that it is adopted. Yeah, I would too. Charter schools for adverse students. We shall urge the adoption of legislation that defines special expectations of the state authorized charter schools to educate adverse students, including the requirement that the state authorized charter schools program and operations be specifically designed to attract and service adverse students, and that the state authorized charter school be required to report to the public its process in achieving these expectations. Yes. Yes. Okay, we got through most of them. These are just amending existing provisions. Prevailing wage act. This says each public body prior to the amendments in June of 2019 was annually responsible for ascertain the prevailing wage rate. As a result of the amendments, public bodies are no longer in post published discussed or adopted annual, an annual prevailing wage resolution. The full responsibility is shifted to the Illinois Department of Labor, full under to ascertain and publish the prevailing wage rates for each county. And Illinois has been given to the Illinois Department of Labor and this school board would like to restore the procedure to local control. So anyone support or oppose it's recommended that we do adopt this?
Okay, so does this district, the district is not in support of the prevailing wage act? Is that what it's saying?
It's not in support of the amendments that were made in January to the Illinois prevailing wage act that allows the Department of Labor to regulate the wages rather than allowing the public bodies to do so. Okay, here's the pertinent paragraph, I think. Committee realizes that in this political climate, it is unlikely to see any positive movement on changes to this act. In fact, there was a strong push this past year to significantly expand the parameters of the prevailing wage by forcing its application beyond the boundaries of construction projects. IASB was a key member of the coalition that helped stop seat bill 1783, percent of bill, legislation that has been pushed several times in the past decade. IASB, having been a strong opponent of the prevailing wage act for many years, committee supported the concept of this resolution. So it seems to be that they think it's unlikely that anything would happen here, even if they lobbied for it. Support, oppose, anyone? Yes, six left.
I feel uncomfortable about supporting a resolution against the prevailing wage act, but I also do not know enough about this particular issue. But.
I feel uncomfortable with this one personally. I feel like as a board, we kind of came to the conclusion that we don't really want our lobbying money to be listed. And I think that based on information that we have here, it's indicating that our lobbying money would not make a difference. And so perhaps we better spend in other areas.
So we'll oppose that on those principles. Educational programs. IASB shall urge its member districts to develop educational programs so as to minimize educational, maximize, sorry, educational opportunities for students by fully utilizing teacher and staff potential, community resources, and physical facilities. The goal of each district shall be to serve the interests, talents, and needs of each child through an outstanding, well-balanced program. The association shall also encourage its members to increase their awareness of the mental health code, which supports developments and implementation of a plan to incorporate social emotional learning standards as part of the Illinois learning standards. School personnel are encouraged to implement trauma responsive practices to support student success within a trauma responsive school framework.
I'm for this.
I think this falls in line with what our school already does.
Anyone oppose? Okay. State authorized charter school funding. IASB shall urge adoption of legislation which would create a new methodology for funding of state authorized charter schools, which would not have a negative financial impact on the host district, particularly in the spirit of evidence-based funding, which I think is a key area. I would be in support of that.
Agree.
Okay. Funding for special ed campaigns. Got three left. IASB shall urge the Congress of the United States to adequately fund Public Law 94142, the Individuals with Disability Education Act, commensurate with the mandates required by the act. Shall strongly encourage the state of Illinois to totally fund with new monies in a timely manner the extra cost of educating children with special needs, including transportation and accessibility costs. Shall seek changes in the current practice to fund local districts for special education and professional personnel at 51% of the prior year's average salary for such professionals, and shall continue to oppose any requirements that local public school districts pay for reward costs for any disabled child placed in park facilities. And shall encourage states to create a new line item with funding from new dollars that school districts could request a one-time grant from if a high need child enrolls or is identified in the district after September 30th of this year. And the change language is they just updated the word handicapped to the word disabled and then added that like last piece, which allows the district to request a one-time So I would be in favor of that. Okay. One more on special ed. And again, this is a really similar change. So again, they're updating the language to disabled and then updating, they're adding another provision that says shall support modifications to state laws that would equalize the reimbursement provision, so funds would be distributed through a placement mutual So again, I would support this.
Agree.
Margaret, Dave, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Last one. Thank you for your questions. Standardized test procedures. And this is just reaffirming the existing position on standardized testing. So I'm not going to read it because it's long. But anyone have an opinion, support or oppose? If the resolutions committee recommends that we adopt it, I would agree.
It doesn't seem to have any accountability, but we manage not to test this. I would agree.
Okay. We're done. All right. Only once a year, thankfully. Okay, moving on to FOIA requests. We have none. Notices and communications.
So really the items B, the help I did to report, that's done annually by regional certification has been included in there, which means our trust, as well as the quest monthly newsletter that I was also in your weekly update last week of just how we were identified or recognized, I should say, quest from IASB via newsletter, some of our students, and then the seat all agenda for December board, the governing board, the agenda, so I'm not sure if any one of you are able to attend.
Jose Sati attended, or what is his name now?
Sam Corr.
Okay, great. I told us, oh, that's important. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments and petitions on non-aggressive items. Do we have any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple.
Sure.
Emma said before, I'm a parent of three students, one intermediate, intermediate of third, senior, and major. Sorry, wrote it down. Okay, so the previous gentleman who did his presentation says that his school, I believe, is among the white high school. He says that they have a paid parent liaison or paid parent liaison. Do they have those opportunities for the West Coast intermediate, West Coast middle school? They, he said higher.
So, right, because that there is.
I can't speak to them.
She says, hey, though, we have that position. Right?
Yes, and if not, is there, who is it exactly? I would speak with to some of the employer that he added to this particular branch of this particular agency.
This is a perfect forum for that.
Perfect. Additionally, the topic was discussed about school safety, not so much about IAS and things like that, but as far as having armed persons on campuses or in school buildings or whatever for safety reasons. Has anybody thought about possibly hiring counselors for the students to speak with? Because a lot of the time it's the kids who don't have somebody to share their feelings with that have the most issues.
Sure.
That could potentially be volatile and they roam in our hallways every day and that, something else. And then as far as the safety officer, will there be any biased training, so to speak? We all know the climate we live in. I don't feel like I need to address it too much, but I do know that lately we've been seeing an influx of people who look a lot like myself and my children and a lot of the people in my community being accosted and assaulted by people who are supposed to be there to protect them from each other sometimes.
Sure.
So would that be something prior to them being hired or brought into the school that that would be addressed as well?
Are you talking about the specific officer or are you talking about our current staff?
Either or both.
Well, we go through and can speak to what professional level that we have, and it's a goal of ours that we've had for a few years is just, you know, equity and excellence and just making sure that our staff are culturally aware as well, not only of our socioeconomic, but our ethnic differences, but also social and emotional differences and the needs. So our staff are having continuous and ongoing professional development as well as our administrators. But we are also looking at, I mean, just your two topics of your safety officers, we evaluate our staff and our administrative needs every year and it's ongoing. So I think we look at student data, you know, what are maybe group K V I N S or what discipline did or are talking to our administrators on an ongoing basis of what their needs are and what kinds of support they need. So that is something that we're always constantly communication about. So it's a needs assessment. So your comments are very well listened to, they're heard and respected, and I would definitely follow up with our team.
Okay. Now, you said that you do that for your staff. So that's for the people who like have tenure or people who are hired on. What about, is that the case also for your substitutes? I know you all touched base on having them, what was it, background check? But are they also going through that same bias training or constituency training?
Our long-term substitutes do if they're, you know, taking over a long-term leave. They participate in our professional development, but if we have substitutes on a day-to-day basis, sometimes they're not able to participate in that because usually our professional development happens when students are not in school, so then our substitutes are not here either.
Okay. I would strongly suggest that that might be, you know, a part of the hiring process or whatever the case may be. I know that one of my students had a particularly uncomfortable incident with a substitute and I'm unaware as to whether or not she was more of a long-term person or she was somebody who comes on a day-to-day situation, whatever the case may be. I would suggest that that be also a part of that onboarding, as it were. As a person who worked in corporate America, whether it be for a contract. As a person who works in corporate America, whether it be for a contract, or for a long-term process, whatever it is, I have certain trainings and things that I have to go through in order to be a part of the organization. I feel like that's important for anybody who has any contact whatsoever with kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just clarification on one of your questions. I think what your concern was about school resource officers, whether or not they receive sensitivity training, or biased training. We don't currently employ.
That's what she said, do we have one? We don't.
We do not currently, right?
Right. I mean, I understand that there isn't someone who is currently an in member of the school, but I'm saying, like, if that is something that is introduced into, would schools want to?
That's not currently on our radar, but if we ever did, that's.
And we appreciate your point.
I should clarify.
Thank you. Moving on to others, I just want to take a second and say thank you to Daisy in the VPAP for putting on Danielle's tortoise last Friday. I think it was an outstanding event. It was very well-intended, our community. Poor Dr. Druck, I think spent 20 hours serving guacamole that night. But everyone had a wonderful time, and you know exactly how much hard work and effort that taking, you know, planning an event that that skill takes, so we just want to say thank you, and we really appreciate that, and it's a wonderful tradition to be able to continue.
Thank you, and I did talk about it that day, like I prefer, like I, I wanted to make you guys see, because it really was just an idea that was thrown out in the community involved, and kind of just our teachers going on more and more, you know, with it, and they love seeing their students, and the students love seeing the teachers here, with interacting with their parents, and they raise the unit here, and the administration even being part of it, like, you know, certainly included in it, it really is a community piece with that, you know, kind of letting us see indeed some things that we aren't moving towards inclusiveness and just embracing diversity. Yeah, I mean, one small event, but, two hours, but it's great work down there to come, and I'm greatly grateful for them. Thank you guys for supporting us.
Of course. I thank you all of you for attending too, it was great to see all the staff turnout, and the community turnout, it was really a great event.
I was just gonna, I was gonna do the same thing, George, and I compliment and thank, show our appreciation for Daisy and the event, but also at the team that was all there, as well as the staff. But I know Dr. Myers spoke to this, about just the partnership that we have with the high school, and I know that they also kind of modeled their event after ours on the state night, and used pretty much the same format that Daisy and her team had put together, so I think that's a good compliment to Daisy and the team, because invitation is the best form of plating. But as we look forward to next year, I think that's another way for us to partner with District 120, as well as with 75, and make it more larger events that we can have in the entire community, and so I know that those are conversations that are starting between our districts, so we're excited about that opportunity. So thanks again, everybody, as well as Daisy for putting in the time and the effort.
Any other others?
I was just gonna add, that I will add then to Safe Schools Resolution, unless anybody has any questions, and if you do have questions, or additional questions that you think of, that you want, either for me or for Dr. Myers, I'd be happy to forward it on, but otherwise, we'll put it for the resolution and for action at the November 19 date.
Didn't you have an example of like, what specific things they do? I mean, is that available online?
It was in our packet.
I saw that, but it was more of general, I think last.
What do you mean?
Resolution. Yeah, the specific things, they're outlined in the resolution, there's like five things that we have to do, with just like informing staff, informing the community, putting it on our website, so those are the things that we do too.
Sure. But like, what about like, the actual implementation of the, of the program, of the Safe School program? Like, is there like, training that goes along with it?
Well, so the article that I had shared with you, that was what they had shared with their staff, and they kind of went over it, like at a institute, Dave, just to raise the awareness of staff to know, you know, if students do come to them, that the things, or the staff's approach, how they respond to that, so we'll share that out. We'll also post it on our website, at the board@asef schools resolution, so our community knows that, you know, they've looked at. So those are the things that, when you talk about, what are we doing, those are the actions that we have to take for it. And if articles and research and things come up, and I'll work closely with Dr. Myers on that, and then just sharing that, I was fascinated with, either with all of you, or as well as with the administrative team and the staff.
Anything else? Okay, we're now going to go into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, disciplined performance, or dismissal of a specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Who? Kwan? Yes. Rosada?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman? Candela?
Sullivan?
Yes.